The Newton Historic Preservation Commission meeting to order. That's okay with everybody in here? First order on the agenda is consider approval of the September ninth, two thousand twenty-four meeting minutes. I'll make a motion to per- motion to approve. Second?
I wasn't here, but I have a question regarding the minutes.
Okay.
Item four, I believe. It says that there was a motion to, to approve the. And so I'm, I don't know if that means the repair project, the project, something like that.
Yes, I will fix that. It should say, um. Approve the application as it will not just damage or destroy any historic resources and fits within the local guidelines. That's what it should say.
Where the work is being done.
Yes. Yes.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I'll amend it with those modifications.
It's a second, okay.
Got to see what you guys are doing when I'm not here.
Do we have a second?
He did.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor, same. Motion passes. Second order. Hey Knights Columbus, we did it there. We banged. Number two, hundred, let's say one, a hundred fifteen and one twenty-three muse adaptive reuse.
Alrighty, well this is might be one of the most exciting and most interesting projects we've reviewed yet. Um, at least in a long while before this body. So this project is taking place as part of a larger hole in the block that you'll see here on your screen here at First Street. In this, uh, sandborne map from nineteen eighteen, you see the street name at, um, Emrelia. That's changed later and we have Muse, so the street's naming will change as we go through this, but you'll see that block. And, um, they, the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Quering are looking to revive the block pretty much in this type of fashion. And so the project before you today is trying to fit closely with how it sits here. See the next slide? This is an, oh, sorry. This is an updated sandborne map. It's a little bit smaller there in the corner, but you'll be able to see that as time progressed and First Street is at the top. So it gets a little bit funkier in these sandborne maps. More homes were, um, put in on Muse Street. That was pretty common at the time. We'll go through that piece by piece, but I want you all to understand that this, while it's the first time you're seeing a, um, review of a property here on this property. It's actually part of a multi-year plan that planning and zoning and building and myself have been working on with the applicants, um, to reinvest in, I think what some, in some ways their family home and, and a kind of a large project in their mind. As part of their project plans to continue forward, they have to plat the property. This parcel was never platted. It's between two additions that were steals first and steals second. And we bring this project to you tonight, actually in that interest of if they get their approval tonight, it will help them in the plating process moving forward so they can continue on in the other work. As you know, if a property is unplatted, we technically can't issue a building permit. So this has put us in a little bit of a pickle, seeing a couple of unplatted parcels in the middle. So, um, there's a specific order to which staff is bringing these projects and advising the applicant to bring the project. One twenty-five and one twenty-three muse, you'll see on that tiny upper corner, they were in a row, um, facing eastward. There was a house in between that no longer exists, at least in this, um, map stage. In the national register nomination, they're contributors to the McKinley District. One for having a type of temple front of porch awning and the other for being an example of a craftsman home. They did have, um, individual nameds on them in their review, but did not have a lot of other distinguishing features at the time. The photos that are in here from the K H R I G I S were those mainly from two thousand seven or even a little bit later. They're in, the current photos are what we've added to the packet. Um, the applicant is requesting to take these two homes and combine them to meet the ADA needs that they have for their own personal use. And the applicant and their contractor is here today. They want to reuse the existing structures as much as possible. And then again reverting the layout of the whole block to that earlier configuration. Both of these properties are showing signs of deterioration. The one twenty-three muse is currently uninhabitable due to the current level of deterioration and previous demolition activities. In the district nomination, one fifteen muse was noted as an example of a one-story craftsman-style home with the porch in the front elevation really carrying a lot of that character. But our records do indicate that the porch was remodeled in nineteen seventy-six, so it's a little bit difficult to tell, um, exactly what was there. So we don't know exactly to what extent that had already been edited prior to that. The one twenty-three muse is described as a one and a half story temple, form of a homestead home with Queen Anne style detailings. And in our records, we have a couple of roof repairs and a foundation repair. Speaking with our, uh, building inspector, he did accentuate just earlier last, at the end of last week, the extreme deterioration of the properties, I believe it was the one twenty-three muse, the back porch has pretty much come apart from. So that is just to sort of build up their current condition. What you see before you is their proposed east elevation. They are wanting to move the setback to the twenty-five foot, which is typical. The one twenty-three muse has a very unusual setback for the neighborhood, doesn't really fit the feel. That's how it was built again. Nothing was platted, it was quite some time ago. And then the one fifteen muse, they would revert in a perpendicular fashion, creating this ranch home that you see before you. And they've set with their builder and their designers to make something that would be fully ADA accessible for their personal use that they have a family member for. They would then put this new build with these old existing materials kind of set between the two. And I think we have a image of the layout. You can see the current drives and how this kind of sets in the middle of that. Again, this goes to a more block configuration at this point. And I'll go through some of my staff comments here. These properties are included on the district nomination as contributors, but again, they're not individually listed. One thing that I added into your packet was the growth and development of the McKinley neighborhood. And as you'll note there, the developers are buying them at a block at a time, which would appear to be the case with this one as well. And then the other parcels would be sold off and you can see that in the development. The missing parcel, which I believe the applicants referred to as the morehouse, that would have probably been one of the first pieces built. And then they'd build off the corners and then as time would go by, you would segment smaller and smaller pieces off, which you can see with the infill, the smaller sized homes. In the makeup and feel of a historic district, it's recommended that retaining the historic relationship between buildings and other visual features is important. In the proposal, the spacing would revert to an earlier period. The setback would align with the rest of the neighborhood. The proposed new project would create a visual appearance of a ranch-style home indicative, however, of a later area, era. But ranch homes do appear in the district, but just not on this block. So then one of the questions that you might have to consider tonight is whether the project diminishes the character of the district or if it maintains it. I did reach out to the Harvey County Historical Museum to get some of their, um, records and they found some evidence of Abe Quering advertising for things for sale at the one twenty-three muse. And, um, a W D Muro purchasing the property from Quering in nineteen eighteen. And then they have some, um, resident listings in the city directories, trying to build a little bit of a history. We were not able to find anything for one fifteen muse, uh, prior to nineteen thirty-one. And that's about when time led us, um, stopped us a little bit there. One other thing I'll go into before I ask the applicant and their contractor to, um, speak with you all is that we talk about in our local ordinance, some of the things like a demolition, which there will be some demolition to this. You'll notice the porches will be removed. Actually, could you go back to the elevation then? Thank you.
Sorry.
And then relocation, because obviously we'll be relocating two buildings and the land change. The, what our ordinance gives us for a little bit of direction is that demolition and whole or part of an individual structure shall ordinarily not be permitted. And then there's exemptions due to fire, windstorm, et cetera. The other exception may be allowed if the structure does not pass the integrity, originality, craftsmanship, age, or historical significance, significance to merit preservation. They also discuss that structures should not be removed from their sites, but the exceptions again allow if there's substantial evidence that it would not be practical or economical to utilize the building on its present site. I think the applicants will make that case to you tonight. And then they discuss as well that the substantial change of land surface within the boundaries of a historic structure site landmarked district should not be permitted. Exceptions will be allowed only if there's substantial evidence that the change would not be detrimental to the historical and architectural character of the surrounding structures. And that's where we offered the older sandborne map to show an older layout. I would ask Mr. and Mrs. Quering if they want to come to the podium and discuss it a little bit more for you.
I want to start, I want to show you, this is actually a picture of my mother's childhood home in Gorham, Kansas. Gives you a tree of what this house would look like after it was finished, just so you can see it. That looks so plain, but that's not the way I see it.
What, what town is that?
Gorham.
This is where my mother was born.
Yeah, what's the town?
Gorham.
Gorham, okay.
This was actually, it's a, uh, it's from nineteen sixteen, is this house. So it has some of that layout of this one that we're doing. I'm a gardener, so I look at brass and trees and flowers. Okay.
So, well, this is a project and we're happy to be here and see you guys finally, because it's been literally forty-five, fifty years in the making, the doing of this. So ever since the hospital, the Bethel Deaconess Hospital used to be on the next block over, they came before this, not this commission, but the city commission once upon a time to ask for a change of zoning so that they could put a parking lot into this block. And Lillian's family was opposed to the idea and, and thought that it would do damage to the block in terms of residences down the road. So since that moment, Lillian's brain has been spinning how she can help undo that damage that she was pretty sure was going to happen. That damage did happen and the, the block has suffered because of it. We have a wider plan to, to work on that block, but this house is predicated on the idea of two things. One is preserving those two homes that are currently there in some form and preserving the history of those homes. So Lillian knows personally the families that lived in these homes. Uh, one-two-three house was a kind of an immigrant house and there were succession of different.
Refugees.
And different people that were refugees that lived there, who are still around, still current people in the community. And preserving that house preserves those memories to some extent. The one fifteen house had been a rental for quite a long time, but Lillian knew those neighbors, those neighbors were part of the culture of that area. And, uh, so by fitting our need for a handicapped accessible house and preserving those two structures, we think we accomplished the best of both worlds on that. So, and Lillian is, uh, has always been highly interested in preserving old materials. We've just put some bricks in our yard that were bricks that were in the, in the basement of four nineteen East First. So they were put there in like nineteen eighteen by her father and her father's brother. Those bricks got dug up and we put a basement under that house. She saved those for a number of years. Looks long-term and, and now we've got those bricks in the yard. We preserve those old materials, we've used them, they retain the culture and the memory and the experience of those days, so.
They're actually, they're outside, if you drive down First Street now, they just finished today. So all of our walkways are lined with those bricks that came out of the basement. Drilled pretty.
So, and of course, four nineteen is a house that was restored and retains a lot of features that were there from, uh, from eighteen seventy-eight or whenever it was built. So, so that's, that's our intention, use the old materials, keep the memories alive, put those two houses together and suit our current needs, so. Guys have any questions?
Any questions for the committee? Like the porch posts and all that, will that be kind of traditional?
Yeah.
Irritated?
Posts that are pictured there imitate the posts that are currently on one-two-three muse. And that's the plan is to, to, where we can, if we can use existing posts, we'd use them. If we can't use them, we'll imitate them to keep the feel.
And you'll keep the same siding on both houses and then ma- paint it to match probably?
Correct.
Yes.
What about the porch deck?
The porch deck, the, the, the new deck that was going to come into existence there? Yeah, so that would probably be tongue and groove, flat decking, like, fine.
If there's any materials that are salvageable, I will salvage them and reuse them on the object.
Yes, he will. That's the first thing I said, well, you must, yes.
I'm gonna let them finish, you know? Then I'll redirect all you guys to.
No, I really salvage everything. When we redid our four nineteen house, this fall or this spring, we had to completely redo the porch, but all the posts, the original posts from the eighteen hundreds are still there. But we had to, uh, switch out the decking, but I've saved the decking because I'm going to use it someplace else, so I have it.
Uh, I'm just curious, I live in a, a similar era, Queen Anne House on West Knights Street. And under the deck, like, I can't figure out what the original fill-in would have been under the decking. You know, a lot of people put lattice and things in it now, I don't like that. So what, what is your intention?
Well, I don't have an intention right now. I have an intention of whatever somebody would like. That, this particular one, the one-two-three one, it, it's been gone. I don't, it was just like this, the platform from the deck and I don't know what they had underneath it. The one-two, uh, excuse me, the one fifteen is the one we're going to be turning, it actually has, um, what do you call that? Oh, the wood, the skirting, it has, it is wood skirting slats. Yeah.
I, I want somebody to tell me what to do with my house to make it.
Oh, I see, I can, what would you like?
We'll have to have a conversation.
I have the materials too.
Maybe she's got material.
That's right.
I really do, yeah. And I mean the real deal.
Okay.
My biggest question, so the, the one twenty-three is actually going to be moved back?
Yes.
Because it's way up there.
One twenty-three has to move back to East the Eastments.
Okay.
And then the one fifteen, what is facing west, will be turning and facing south. So the, what is the front of the house now, the face, street facing, will actually be facing north. So it'll, it'll, it sets this way, it'll turn this way. So the thought is to slide the house back, slide both houses back, dig the basement, pour the basement, slide the, um, the one twenty-three house forwards onto the site and then spin the one fifteen.
Okay.
And then slide in.
So there'll be new foundations?
Yeah. There's under the tile there.
They need it, yes.
With, with full basement?
Yes, full basement.
Okay, good.
And eight-foot, eight-foot new construction between the two houses to marry the two houses. The, the addition that is on the side.
You're, you speak a little loudly, but I just.
Okay, so the addition that is on the north side of one twenty-three. It doesn't show there. Um, there's, there's addition, a newer addition on the north side of one twenty-three and there's a little older addition on the west side of one twenty-three. We're going to, we're going to attempt to maintain that addition that's on the west side. Just how it's built to the house and how it works with the construction. It's a little older addition, kind of more with the time. The one on the north side is a newer addition and there are structural integrity issues that need to be addressed with that. So that addition's coming off, that's getting replaced with new construction to marry the two houses together. So, um, as far as building materials, um, you guys are familiar with the house move that happened in Newton, uh, March of last year. That's one of my projects.
Okay.
That house was built nineteen oh nine, Alma Shelley has that house. We reused on that house as much as we could on there. Where we could not reuse, we matched materials. So we were able to source the siding, the cedar siding and go back in, so everything's the same. Sofits that are visible, um, we had a little looser restrictions because it's not in the historical society. My opinion is it should be, it's nineteen oh nine house, we found out to be exact. But the soffits that you can see, we've matched tongue and groove up in the top of that, so everything visually, cosmetically looks the same. Trim inside, same thing. If we couldn't find it, couldn't have it made, we figured out how to reproduce it. And the, the trims, trim that is inside of these houses are very similar from house to house. And we want to maintain that appearance throughout the whole inside of the house. We already have plans underway on how to make that happen. Everything from, you know, the headers above the doors have some crown molding decorative on it to, um, the style that's around the door. There, and then the baseboards are a tall baseboard, but we want to maintain as much of that as we can. They've salvaged a bunch of it. It happens that Alma's house had a lot of the same stuff. And I still have some left over that I can use in this house, so it is actual era correct. As far as the porches, if the tongue and groove, I know the roof up above on the one fifteen house is in really good shape. What year did you say that was?
We have a permit for nineteen seventy-six.
Seventy-six, it says that there was work done, but it doesn't say what it is. It looks about error correct. If I could add anything on to what these guys were saying, um, the one twenty-three house, in my opinion, if it doesn't get attention, it will be at a point of disrepair real quickly. I mean, very quickly. There's, once the movers pick it up, we're going to be putting new sill plates on the whole thing. They've got termite damage, there's ledger boards that have just completely rotted away. I mean, it's, it's in pretty rough shape. Plaster's falling, things of that. The one fifteen house, it's in pretty good condition. A majority, if not all of the walls that are in the one fifteen house, pull up my blueprint, a majority of them, uh, are maintained. The. Yeah, all of them are. There's just some windows that are built shut, maybe making some space for tubs to fit correctly and toilets to fit correctly.
No.
No.
And the one twenty-three house.
We just have.
Because that one, it must be ADA compliant for these guys, not conforming to eighty, not conforming to the requirements, but for what their needs are. That's just the easiest way for us to go with that. Wider doors, things of that nature, a lot of the doors in there are twenty-eight inches. We need to open up doorways, we need to open up access egress. So with that, we will be moving walls in there. But a majority of the work that needs to be done in that one is on the addition that is on the west side of the building, that is not original to the building. As far as the pillars on the front, uh, we have four pillars currently and there's five in the picture. So we are, we are currently sourcing, uh, matching. If we can't get the exact match, we will have all of them to look the same as close to error correct as we can. So. Any other questions as far as from contractor's side? Oh, the other one, I talked with David about, um, city inspector on the one twenty-three staircase. Currently, you come down the staircase and it has a sweeping, a fan stair at the bottom to turn ninety degrees. In order to keep with that comply- ADA compliance or ADA egress, we need to change that to a straight run out. There is enough room to get really, really, really close to code, within a half an inch on width of step and height that's correct to code, um, and not run into the other room. So, and then the width of the staircase going up is currently at thirty-five inches. Code says thirty-six is what we need, so we want to maintain that thirty-five inch width if we can, because that is an original staircase and it is a wooden staircase. So to reproduce that exact look is going to be extremely difficult, so. The area, when I was saying of the integrity, you guys have this copy?
They gave them one.
Yeah, it's going through.
Okay, so when you're holding sheet one, the area right here from the staircase to this wall right here. Go back in your pictures.
I've got a second one here.
Back. Okay, that is, that is that wall. There is no support for the roof on that wall. It's a, it's a single sill plate, um, just stuck in there. There's no sagging yet, give it time, it will. We plan, if everything proceeds, before the house is moved, that, where the bathtub is and out that side is all going to come off. And that's going to be where that opening is for the new bath. A new wall will go in there, but we will build a wall in before the house moves, so we can maintain the structural integrity of the house.
So Rebecca, we, we don't have any say over whether thirty-five or thirty-six inch, that's, that's not.
No, that's not.
No, that's what, that's what.
I just wanted to make sure that that didn't need to be in our motion.
No, 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 no. The two things for you all to discern tonight is one, does it damage, destroy the historic resource? And remember, in this case, the resource is the whole neighborhood. So does this add value to the neighborhood or detract from it? Is pretty much that question. And then does it fit within the McKinley guidelines of, does it, would it, would this build fit within the neighborhood? So those are your two questions that you'll need to decide tonight.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Yes. All of their names are on their application, correct?
Yes, it's David and Lillian Query.
Do what?
I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay.
What do you guys think? Do we have a motion?
Uh, I would propose that we approve the application as written, uh, seeing that it does not damage or destroy the historic resource of the neighborhood and that the, uh, application fits within the local guidelines for the neighborhood.
I would second that motion.
We have a first and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same?
Great motion, by the way, very well said. I would have made, I would have made the motion.
I was plating.
Under, in discussion, in discussion, I wanted to say I, I really hand it to you two for really, um, uh, trying to preserve as much of the structures as you can, because.
I love that block.
Well.
Come see it, come visit.
I live.
I'm so excited.
I lived at Third and Pine, so there, I mean, three, fourteen East Third for twenty years, so I, I know that neighborhood well. But, but to be using, this is no small feat. And so I commend you for doing that and for trying to save, because what's going to happen is, you know, you're going to, it's going to be a missing tooth in the smile of that neighborhood or whatever, if it just becomes dilapidated and has to be taken down. So I, I would want to commend you on this adaptive reuse, so. And I, I really, um, you know, whatever you can do to keep, keep it look as much like those structures as possible, that would be great. I'm gonna love it. Well, can't wait for the open house.
I already have the trees picked out.
I'm certain you do, and the, and the plantings.
And the plants, that's really good.
Agenda point number three, C three downtown district resurvey.
All right, yes, today we have our consultant, um, Ms. Cynthia with us and she's going to go through the project that we undertook utilizing the two thousand twenty-three, Historic Preservation Fund grant.
No, no.
Yeah, thank you guys.
No, we're going to make you stay through this important.
It was part of, it was part of the motion, no.
Best of, best of luck to you.
Best of, best of luck to you.
Come see it.
I will probably keep coming by.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Anyway, the grant was awarded in twenty twenty-three. We put out an RFP for consultants. This body approved the selection and then it went to the city commission. You can sit down if you.
You're gonna stay?
Wherever you.
Okay.
Is it gonna stay?
Yeah. And then in February of twenty twenty-four, we finalized our agreement and she got started and she's gonna, so she already know where we are. We are just at the finish line right now.
At the finish line, all right. Well, good evening, gentlemen. My name is Cynthia Ammerman. It has been a real pleasure to do this project, so Aubrey, are you?
Are you ready?
Yep. All right. So Cynthia Ammerman, thank you again for selecting my firm to do this project. I have been a consultant, you have, since you haven't got to meet me, I'm going to give my, my little spiel. So I've been a historic preservation consultant for ten years, almost eleven. Prior to that, I was a real estate broker. I have worked in historic preservation across the country. This project was extra special because it was, got to bring me back to the rural communities of my, and similar to where I grew up on the Missouri side. So I've had my own firm and I am a heritage and preservation officer with the United States Army Reserves. And I work with the, founded the Kansas City Latin Jazz Orchestra where I have brought together music and cultural heritage planning altogether, so. Next slide. So this project, we kicked it off in February twenty twenty-four, was on the ground here in Newton for our first site visit in March. That consisted of three days of, of photography. That was a great, a beautiful weekend, a beautiful week where the first day we got snow and by the time we left it, we were in our T-shirts. So in April, had a second site visit, finished up some photography, did a few more internal, interior visits of churches. Was present in May for the Kansas Preservation Conference. Was able to have an open house in conjunction with the, the chamber breakfast. Did some, again, just walking with the community and learning more about the piecing together research. In June, we provided our initial recommendations, which I believe you've, you reviewed. July, we was able to get everything that they're to report started. And then the last couple of months have been really refining those maps, getting a lot of the, the digital or the, the photography and data uploaded to the Kansas Register database. Next slide. So just as a reminder, this project was all, the survey project is done all in conjunction within the framework of National Register criteria and all of these, since Kansas has the, the beautiful Kansas Register, we are able to take the, those into consideration also. Next slide. So the survey steps, what, what we, the approach is, the visual survey is really the, the benchmark. The research, that is the next phase. I would say on average, I like to calculate that between five and eight hours goes in to every building that is studied. So the next step is, is the documentation process where we bring together the photography from the visual survey, the, the mapping that comes with the research from the archives, putting that and creating the document. And then out of that documentation comes the final assessment, which is where we take the criteria for the National Register. Do these parts, do these buildings have significant events, persons, are they significant architecturally? Or do they bring potential for information? Next slide. Again, here's, if you need a refresher, these are the criteria. This survey project was, was unique and I will say groundbreaking for the state of Kansas and maybe also for our region because we approached all of these not only from the architectural significance, but really emphasizing the cultural significance and the cultural diversity of this community over, over time. So it might, we might have expanded into the cons, the events, looking more at cultural, looking more follow, following the alongs of certain policies, immigration patterns, maybe changes in policies in medical research in the, in the country. Of course, we just follow down with all of those things, follow with the, assessing the other three criteria. Next slide. So here's a map of the formal zoning map, which is the C three district. As you can see, the outline on the map that I created, the orange area is the project survey area and the sites that are outlined in black are the existing historic districts. So we had a pretty good footprint that was a little over double and a half, double and a half, we'll say, of what we were reviewing. The initial count was, I think we were at a hundred and ninety-three parcels. There's probably, there's probably a little cleanup there because there's some parcel merges, but that's roughly two hundred is where we are looking at for building sites and structures. Next slide. So this is more of, a more refined map. I wanted to emphasize, because the point of the, one of the emphasis of bringing, of doing survey work is you are layering and you are continually documenting the community's history. So the initial, the initial historic districts, historic district one, in its period of significance cuts off at nineteen thirty-two. And then historic district number, excuse me, yeah, historic district number one is nineteen thirty-two and historic number two is nineteen fifty-three. So to move forward and to potentially have more culturally significant sites, buildings or events, we, we pushed the study of archival work and building dates into the nineteen seventies. And that helps us get a, you know, because records can be, not, can be less static permits. So we reviewed permit data, city directories, newspaper archives, looked at even parish and church documents that, that were readily available. To, to highlight what is, I don't want to say trending in historic preservation, but has become more of a priority in preserving the buildings is the, the mid-century modern buildings and moving and, and from the post-World War Two era. I like to say that this is one of the eras that we still had a very good quality in materials. There's, you know, the terrazzo and the marble and you see a lot of that in the additions in the churches still. The finer quality woods on the interior and exteriors. And also a lot of these, you see it, it also gets a good print of the, the commerce of the region. And you see a lot of banks are notorious for having mid-century modern buildings. So it's really a timestamp of success and of, of a community also to preserve these buildings. So the building, or the parcels that are outlined in purple are the buildings that correspond with that post-World War Two era. So the, again, the orange line, orange boundary is the C three district. The, the powder blue line on, that you see, is a potential, the proposed historic district expansions that we're, that we're proposing. This takes into consideration that the, the Secretary of the Interior likes to see as much continuity of buildings, of parcels. So you'll see that, that blue line is brought in significantly than our survey area. That is because, that would be due to the lack of architectural integrity. The parking lots, we don't need to include parking lots within the historic district as much as possible. We, you know, want to limit that. And so that's why that, the proposed district expansions looks a little different. Now, when I'm on the ground, I'm also not, I'm also looking all around myself and I'm not just looking at with the boundaries. So we did include roughly twelve to sixteen parcels that have studied that were not in the C three but were directly adjacent to that area, and so they were worthy of, of, of inclusion. And so these, this just kind of goes back to that original map to see where that historic district, the existing historic districts are. Next slide. And I just wanted to highlight, these are the, these are the best, not the best, but the, the, the high levels of modern examples, I would say. The senior, the senior activity center is fantastic because it still has the, the showroom from Kansas, from the Kansas Electrical Co-op. And it's, I would say it's a hundred percent intact, and so there's a lot of potential there. It is active. Another thing I, another reason I like to prioritize the mid-century buildings is because most of these buildings are already deemed for ease of use. They have open spaces and they're, so there's a lot, less modifications if you're using them for social purposes. Next slide. So just, I think we're getting, we're almost getting to the end here, but the, all the parcels in green would be, would be listed as contributing buildings. The, I'm estimating, once we get everything finalized and get word back from the State Historic Preservation Office, so between the, the two historic districts, there are sixty-four buildings in those two districts. And then with the, if we were to expand, we're roughly at a count between forty and forty-five additional contrib, buildings that could be contributing, excuse, no, excuse me, considered contributing. Next slide. Going back to how we looked at this project a little bit differently and really honing in also on the cultural, the cultural history of the community. The areas in pink are, I'm just, would like to recommend for future study areas because they have been sites. There, there may not be a lot of visual history there, but there are potential for markers, historical markers, honoring the community there, in the neighborhoods of people who lived there in the past. So that, those are areas that I would like to recommend that are associated with the, the Mexican-American heritage that is so strong in the community. And just want to kind of wrap up here, the, again, you know, we really focused not only on the buildings, but what happened in those buildings and who, and really the stories and the people who make the history and make the community what it is. And, you know, bringing it back to the, the connections between the religious communities and the, the medical community and looking at that interchange of how they've always existed together. And so honoring, honoring those names and the, the women, the, the art, other elements that is pri, is becoming more priority in looking at for historic designation from the Secretary of the Interior. So that's, that's what, moving, moving the past forward is, was really the theme of, of the survey and working in bringing, because so much, so much had, there's been a lot of time that has passed since a, a full survey has been done. I think it was twenty eleven was the last one. And so a lot, a lot has changed in how communities are assessed for historic significance. And that is what we're bringing, bringing that up to speed with the survey. Next slide. So the final, the final recommendations, there's really four big recommendations. So number one, expand the historical context. So this moving that, moving forward with, into the nineteen seventies and formally documenting that with the, the community's progress. Number two, considering the, the modern era resources, prioritizing those within the existing historic districts, which would be, a modification would be relatively simple. Next slide. Number three, explore the development of a multiple property documentation form, which provides a narrative. They call, call them formally cover documents, so then you outline, we would tell this story of different themes of the community. So between the medical precedent or just for the sake of argument, the Mexican-American heritage, German heritage. And so that's how we would designate the themes and then it opens up the potential for designation a little easier. And then, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, wait, I was done. You were correct. So just, you know, I, I'm here to answer any, any and all questions you may have. Again, this really, this project was fantastic. We, we are, we translated the whole document into Spanish and that was, that is precedent setting. So it was, it was a great honor.
Thank you. Yeah, it is actually, I think, the first planning document that the city has received that's translated into Spanish, which considering the cultural makeup of our community is kind of an important piece for us. I did want to apologize. She gave us an updated copy, but I really forgot in your packet was a draft copy, missing the cover sheet. So I apologize for the format. That's, she sent us the appropriate one and that was on us.
Have a question. So the, the survey and the contributing parcels, are there descriptions of why they were considered contributing parcels in the survey? Is that a, a document that we're going to be able to, to refer back to as we get requests to modify, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, so I would, that, right now, that all lands in a spreadsheet that has been uploaded to the Kansas Historic Records Inventory. And so there is a section on conditions assessment. And anything that, anything that, any building or site that might be not obvious, then we put the, the explanation so that it's, if we were to print all of that out, you would probably have a three hundred page report.
Just looking for.
Yes.
That there is.
But there is the justifications, correct.
And that's what as staff, I just wrote a quick sentence, but as staff, that's what we'd be looking for in our next project. We're really excited to be wrapping this up hopefully by the end of the fiscal year so that we can go into the spring, when the next round of grant opportunities arises, and start bringing, hopefully by January, bringing the, the next proposals so that we can move forward with the planning process.
My, my question stems from, as we see requests to modify a structure, that we don't want to be taking away something that was considered a really contributing element.
Exactly.
You know what I mean, for those who may not know that unless it's right here in front of us.
No, a perfect question. And actually, that, that resources inventory, we use it, they're in your packet. I actually keep a PDF of every single property we do and we refer back to those really, really frequently. So this is, this is the documentation that currently is sent electronically to the state. They are reviewing it right now, so she, we have sent in the final survey report. This was just a really good time for the project, the meeting of the project is completed now. Now we're at the point of going back and forth and finalizing it. But you'll notice in this one that you'll look at, if you see it on page twenty-four, twenty-five, it just says, is it listed in the state register? Is it contributing? If, could it be contributing? There's condition marks on here. These are the fields that she has been inputting along with photographs and things like that.
So also from the survey, are there deteriorations that we might approach business owners or parcel owners to say, would you, you know, we noted in our survey that you may not have known.
I, in this particular survey, with buildings that are already in the historic district and outside of it, the new ones. So every, and that was, that was really the priority because we want to assess where things are at over time. So like the updates literally say twenty-four, twenty-four survey update and then And then I would say, building has been that like maybe windows are deteriorated. And so it's gauged in in this report. And so that's why I wanted to just make sure that you knew that the point of this was also to look at everything that is already historic and make notes. Another example of that would be if they had like the eighteen eighties buildings or nineteen twenties buildings that maybe have the nineteen fifties facade. So if it's still in a really good condition and really exemplifies the nineteen fifties or the nineteen sixties, you could the you could maybe make a choice there. So.
And just to be very clear, the survey does not automatically update any of this. This is just the data gathering. The next part we would need to do would be update our nomination. And as staff, I'll be recommending we update the nomination. Now, whether we include additional properties, I'll leave that up to this body to make that decision before you make the application.
Does that mean nomination? I was one of my questions around the poor structures, not the good structures and what can be done with the deteriorating structures.
Right. So I actually, so you've got a really great, so you've got some good examples in this packet. So you have pages from the McKinley Register in this packet. I did not put the whole thing in here. I just put the ones that were applicable to the project. These are what you do. And you can see for the ones in the McKinley District, I took one fifteen muse and I took one twenty-three muse. But every single property in the district has a piece on it. And we have these for Main Street one and two as well. And so I would say that at this point in time, my initial recommendation to this body would be to create a single Main Street Historic District and open the timeframe up to at least encapsulate the entire thing as one district without a breaking point, without the railroads cutting it in half. And then potentially increasing that date a little further so that we could capture some of those mid-century moderns. Now, for the properties that are not in the district, and then also, when you do that update, if a building has deteriorated to the point it's no longer contributing, we would denote that in that process. It may be of value to ask some of the properties on the side streets, which is why we started it here. I know there's a lot of properties on Sixth Street that have asked about whether could we become a contributing property? That could be, again, a question that we take into the updating survey. And maybe we maybe you don't make a decision. Maybe you leave that up to the consultant to do a little bit of reconnaissance work or citizen input or survey work to see would some buildings on Sixth Street like to do it. But we this is the very first step of at least getting the survey work, setting it out. We can't make a district nomination update without it. We couldn't expand the district without it. We can't condense the district without it. We can't do anything without this. So this was really the primary step to move forward in a reasonable way with those properties. But yes, if and I haven't gotten through all of them because they're still sitting in the state of Kansas's review pile. But if there's a building that has lost significance because of excessive deterioration, then she will have noted that.
Yeah, I can only I don't I can't think of maybe maybe one or two that I don't think there was anything glaring.
Okay. Yeah. And when I read the report, I didn't see any that were taken off, but that's what we were looking for.
I mean, the biggest one, obviously, is Hill Dillon's building that we own that we Any advice for us on that? Help us out to help us push things along?
Currently, that is actually not in the historic district, you know, because we cut out around that. And so one of her proposals in here is that we widen that district so we doesn't have those weird cutout postage stamp sized pieces so that you would have non-contributors to the district, but then they'd have to be consistent with their your design guidelines so that there'd be that same form and feel so you wouldn't have little bit of oddities.
My question was stemming mostly from if we have that information, then we could approach the Kansas Historical for some matching grant dollars, offer matching grant dollars to parcel owners to make those upgrades.
Okay.
Kind of where I was going.
Okay. That's certain.
Rather than you need to fix up a state.
A proposal.
Yeah, how can we how can we encourage?
And Harlan, you could buy the railroad and push the Dillon thing along.
I didn't know Warren was selling.
If you know him well enough.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
That was great. Thanks for the hard work.
I just want to ask a question. First, thank you so much. I, this is incredible. I've never been a part of something like this. So to stand here and listen to your presentation, it was fantastic.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have you ever have you done something like this in another rural community like ours? And if so, have you seen the diversity in the history of the buildings of the community?
I would say that everything we have done has not been done in Missouri or Kansas. I think we're really leading the charge.
All right, cool. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I see another book there, Rebecca, which is, you know, The Aging of Newton Through Its Structures.
Well, we can.
Another coloring book. You've got that.
Yeah. Well, when it maybe maybe we'll need January's meeting to just determine how many grant applications we're going to submit. It sounds like. Mr. Harris, you have quite a few projects for me.
I'm always looking for mine.
Okay, moving along. Old business. Do we have any old business?
No.
No business. Is there any new business that we need to? All right. We're adjourned.
Thank you all for giving up your chiefs and royals games for me tonight.